Good evening, everyone. It's time to call to order this April 16th, 2019, meeting of the Gallatin City Council. And we have a lot of business this evening, so we're going to get started. We'll begin with, as we do each meeting, with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Alexander is going to offer the invocation, and Councilman Fennell is going to lead us in the pledge. If you'd stand with me, please.
In the heart, pray. Turned grace to God. Once again, we come with thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you, dear Lord, for this beautiful day that I has created. We pray on master that thou would be in the midst of this meeting, that everything we say and do will be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name I do pray, in every heart said, "Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, for God's love, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Kettrell, if you'd call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Mr. Fann.
Present.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love.
Here.
And Mr. Overton.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Kettrell. The next item before you is the approval of the minutes from the March 16th, 2019, City Council meeting, the April 2nd, 2019, City Council meeting. We have a motion by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilman Hayes. Are there any additions or corrections? None? All in favor of approving the minutes? Please say aye. Opposed? Please say no. The minutes are approved unanimously. The next item on the agenda is public recognition on agenda-related items, but with this council's permission, I have two proclamations to present. Would you all be okay with me going ahead and doing those proclamations? All right. With that, I'm going to go to the podium. We have two very worthy organizations that I am delighted to have the honor of recognizing this evening. For the first one, I'd like to invite Debbie Amenta Nunez with her dog, Toshi, Rebecca Hunt with her dog, Bonnie, and Jennifer Lindell with Alexis. And they are with the Music City Pet Partners. And I've passed around some information that they asked be distributed to the council, and you can learn more about their organization and what it is that they do in our community. Just for your information, these ladies and these furry ladies all volunteer here in Sumner County at organizations like Sumner Regional Medical Center, various retirement homes, the Shalom Zone, and the Gallatin Public Library. So these are furry gals right here in our community, and the ladies that go with them. Yeah, I'm talking about the four-legged ones, not the human ones. So I will read this proclamation, and then we will do a photo with them. And this says, "Whereas there are hundreds of therapy animal teams serving in communities across Sumner County, including Gallatin, and whereas Pet Partners is designated April 30th as National Therapy Animal Day, and whereas therapy animal team members of Music City Pet Partners play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the human-animal bond, and whereas therapy animal teams make thousands of visits per year in settings such as hospitals, nursing homes, schools, and hospice, and whereas therapy animal teams interact with a variety of people in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students facing literacy challenges, and those approaching the end of life, and whereas these exceptional therapy animals who partner with their human companions bring comfort and healing to those in need. Now therefore, I page Brown Mayor of the City of Gallatin to hereby proclaim April 30th, 2019, as National Therapy Animal Day, and encourage our citizens to celebrate our therapy animals and their human handlers. Furthermore, I publicly salute the service of therapy animals in our community." So congratulations, ladies, and thank you. or substance abuse prevention organizations to come forward. I'll introduce Will Taylor with the State of Tennessee, Mary Butner, who is a volunteer on the Recovery Court of Sumner County, Tracy Bryant, who is the Director of Recovery Court of Sumner County, Jen Crowder, who is with Volunteer Behavior Health, and Kit Senior, who many of you know because she's the Director of our Sumner County Anti-Drug Coalition. We are so very fortunate here in Sumner County that we have many great organizations working to prevent substance abuse and help those who are victims of substance abuse. And so today, we are recognizing Drug Endangered Children Awareness Day. And so I'm going to read this proclamation. And this says, "Whereas April 24th, 2019, is declared National Drug Endangered Children Awareness Day, and whereas the month of April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and whereas drug-endangered children are at risk of abuse and neglect due to their parents or caregivers' illegal drug use, possession, manufacturing, cultivation, or distribution, and whereas caretaker substance misuse interferes with his or her ability to parent and provide a safe and nurturing environment for children, and whereas through multidisciplinary collaboration and community support, we increase the likelihood of intervention occurring in the lives of these children, and whereas with intervention, drug-endangered children move from risk to resiliency, and whereas resiliency can break generational cycles of drug and child abuse and can change the trajectory of children's lives, and whereas all citizens in Tennessee can play a role in reducing risk and building that resiliency. But now therefore, I page Brown Mayor of the City of Gallatin to hereby proclaim April 24th, 2019, as Drug Endangered Children Awareness Day." Thank you all for what you do, and I appreciate you bringing this to our attention so that we may share it with more people. So congratulations, and thank you.
Well, I think...
Here, right here.
I just have a few things. I just want you all to realize, or think about, during this opioid epidemic that we have, we have to remember our smallest population and how they can be affected either by losing a parent to jail or death, or if they get a hold of the drugs themselves, you know, it could result in a terrible situation. So just another population to think about during this time.
So thank you all.
Thank you. How would you like us? Come here, Tracy. You have to do the important part of it. Did you get a picture of the proclamation? Yes, my head came as soon as you on your way. So thank you. I forgot to do that. Thank you.
So thank you all, and we will proceed onward now to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where if anyone is here that has a concern about an item that's on the agenda, they may speak. There is a time at the end of the meeting for public recognition on non-agenda-related items. So at that time, you can bring forth any concern that you may have. But right now, we open public recognition on agenda-related items. You'll have five minutes to speak, and we ask that you introduce yourself and share your address. And I would ask that everyone wishing to speak, to come on forward so that we're not waiting on people to go back and forth to the audience. So right now, public recognition on agenda-related items is open.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Todd Alexander. I live at 217 Strange Circle. Strange name and no circle. I'm passing around some handouts concerning the proposed development of the Patterson property. It's known as the Windsong Development, the corner of South Water and 109. At face value, when you look at the pictures and the proposals that the very nice folks at, I believe it's Reagan Smith, am I getting the company right? All right, will present later, I assume. When you look at picture one on the first page, you see a nice flat piece of property. Looks like a great place to develop. However, if you look at picture two, you'll see Strange Circle. I am one of two people that live on that street. And you see the elevation at that point is 517 feet. If you look at the next picture, picture three, you'll see that the property, it's not exactly half, but somewhere near the middle, there's a tree line on the Patterson Farm, and that the elevation at that point is 557 feet, 40 feet higher than my street. And then also, picture four shows you that out at 109, it's also 557. So I have no problem believing that the front part of that development can be leveled out and made to be a beautiful shopping center, grocery store, some homes, whatever it could be. What concerns me, if you go to the next page, picture five, shows you a picture of what they are proposing, to put some townhomes behind that tree line. And I believe anything built behind the tree line, or what would be north, if you get your bearing there, going toward the Hellwood subdivision, is going to create tremendous drainage problems for us. My property butts up against Dr. Patterson's property. It's my belief that every single square foot of roof and every single square foot of asphalt that you put down for parking or driveways has got to drain somewhere on that backside. I'm not a civil engineer, but I recently missed a step on a ladder and broke my leg, and I didn't break it falling up, I fell down. And I believe that water has got 40-foot drop. It's gonna drop toward Hellwood and especially my property. If you look at picture six, that is taking right at the end of Strange Circle at my driveway, and you can see that hill, and you can see the tree line up there. And if you look on the picture, picture five right above it, you see that in their proposal, they have a retention pond right there in the side of that hill. Again, I'm not a civil engineer, but I don't know that the side of the hill is a great place for a retention pond. I talked with the civil engineer at Reagan Smith. I attended the work session, as well as two planning commission meetings, and voiced my concerns. I talked with the Reagan Smith civil engineer, very nice young man, and I said, "What are you gonna do with this water? I'm the guy 40 feet below what you're building. What are you gonna do with this water?" And he drew me wonderful pictures of these concrete things, and water's gonna go from this one to this one to this one. And I said, "Sir, at the end of the day, where is the water going?" And he said, "Down." And I said, "It's got to come toward us." And he said, "Yes, but we're gonna try to control that." Well, the problem is, we already have concrete ditches in our front yards and our side yards that already overflow with just any good rain that we have. I voiced my concerns. The city engineer was asked by the Planning Commission Chairman, "What about it?" And he said, "You know, Hellwood has always had drainage and flooding problems and always will." And that wasn't exactly the answer I was looking for, for some help, when you're going to add to the water that potentially comes to my property. One of my real concerns, Madam Mayor and Board, is this. There was 11 people sitting around here, and I don't know that all of them maybe necessarily had a vote. I came, I presented this very stuff you have in your hands, I showed them pictures, I told them my concerns, I even added pictures of our ditches full after an inch of rain. I came back the next month to, again, voice my concerns, and I asked how many people sitting here on the planning commission have actually went and looked at the property? It wasn't just flooding. There's people complaining about how narrow the streets are and all the interconnection that they're wanting to do as well, and they said our streets are too narrow for that. I asked how many people have physically went and looked at the streets, at this backside of the property? And would you believe two people had? Thank you, Mr. Fennell, and thank Mr. Wilson, the next time you see him. Two people out of 11 actually went to look to even see how wide the streets were, or to even see how steep this hill looks. Now, I know my commissioner's already looked at it. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. But it's unreal to me to put this much property on the side of a hill. And I know they're gonna do some cutting, and here's what the one, again, great folks, they've been very kind, they've not been obnoxious in any way, but when I asked them, "What are you gonna do?" And even Mr. Purrier at the planning commission asked them, "What are you gonna do?" And the response was, "We're certain we can address this." Well, that doesn't give me much reassurance that you really are gonna do something to cut this. My last comment, Mayor, is that my time up? I know your time is limited and valuable. Ma'am, I would ask you to listen to the recording of the last planning commission meeting. It was absolutely a horrific procedure. Councilman Fennell was making a motion, made a motion, and the chair, without waiting for a second, began to tell everybody why he was opposed to that motion. Mr. Fennell again made a motion, and of course, no one seconded it after the chair so loudly let everybody know he was opposed to it. That is not proper procedure. And I think everybody in here, I'm not a lawyer either, but I know proper procedure. So thank you. I wish you would listen to it. It was several things in there that were really not right. Thank you for my time.
If it gives you any comfort, I think there's six members of the planning commission, the rest were staff, so.
Everybody, nobody else here looked at the votes, did they?
Next, please.
Hi, my name is Kathryn Connor. I live on Stephanie Street. I know Todd Alexander as Pastor Todd, so if I refer to Pastor Todd, some of the things he talked about, that's who I'm talking about.
What is your street number, just for the record?
842 Stephanie Street.
Well, go ahead.
Okay. It is my understanding that at the Planning and Zoning Committee that Pastor Todd referenced, the connection, the connectivity of Duncan, the extension of Duncan Street, was discussed. And there was a motion for it, then there was a motion against it, and then there was it passed with the Duncan Street extension being in the planning and the zoning. I'm here to talk and to ask you to not extend Duncan Street into what's gonna be considered Windsong. That affects my neighborhood directly. And as Pastor Todd, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Duncan, from where Duncan comes out on Maple. That is a very busy intersection as it is. Sometimes the wait to get out there is incredibly long with the traffic coming both directions. So I made some notes. Between Maple, the next street you come down, if you're driving on Duncan, is Height Street. There are 16 driveways, 16 driveways between there. The next street is Malvin. There's four driveways. The next street, Trina, four driveways. The next street is Rodney, seven driveways. The next street is Stephanie, that's my street, 20 driveways. The next street is Jocelyn, 12 driveways. The next street, well, Jocelyn extends into what will be Windsong, that's five driveways. That's six streets with 68 driveways. Traffic and speed is already a problem on Duncan. And you wanna add to it? That's not fair to the residents who live there already. I also understand that Chief Bandi spoke against the extension onto Duncan. If that's wrong, please correct me.
We have concern.
Okay, all right. So anyway, I just wanna ask you to reconsider the Duncan Street extension.
Thank you, Ms. Connor.
My name is Amanda Ross Gregory, and I live at 229 Leah Court. I'm passing down for you some pictures that are not near as pretty as the pastors. These are my crayon drawings, so please bear with me. As you get these, you'll see that Exhibit A is a picture that Bill McCord brought to you last week regarding the connectivity and the reasons for its needs in the community. The left picture is your driving-only transportation pattern, and the right is your walkable connectivity transportation pattern. Exhibit B is your new proposed neighborhood, which mimics the left driving-only transportation pattern with nine dead-end roads. It's virtually impossible for someone to walk quickly through this neighborhood into the shopping area, or, as Mr. McCord mentioned, the school. The next page shows you Exhibit C, which is Elk Acres and Hellwood, and my terrible drawing of the new neighborhood. And you can see from the map that Elk Acres and Hellwood Estates are both properly built to the right picture with the walkable connectivity pattern. In Exhibit C, you can also see the difference, the different path that the emergency vehicles would need to take regarding Chief Williams' comments at the last meeting. And the current 109 path would be far shorter than the seven turns a emergency vehicle would need to take to get to my house going through the new neighborhood. So I urge you to think about the connecting of these neighborhoods, along with the traffic concerns, addition to the children and the surrounding schools, the small yard sizes, 10 feet between homes, five in each yard, and flooding issues. You'll be adding a completely different type of community to our already existing communities. Our neighborhoods are the walking, connectable, transportation network, yet we're being asked to accept less than that from the neighboring community, which you propose to connect to our neighborhood. In addition, this new community has no amenities. That would add no value to our existing community, and would Elk Acres become the playground for all of these children? And my dues have to fix what they chair up? Although I'd love to see this plan completely denied, I believe that the growth on that land will happen, no matter what. And I ask that you don't push a connectivity of a completely different type of community onto Elk Acres and Hellwood Estates. The potential for the issues has been laid out in fact form, and yet the community has been silenced, and the issues seem to appear minute to the City Council. Had the community had the opportunity to speak with each one of you independently prior to the building people meeting with you individually, maybe our voices would have been heard more loudly. I personally would like Chief Williams to speak on this view of how we would connect and how he would manage to take his emergency vehicles in and out. And I'd personally like to hear Officer Bandi's review, as he hasn't spoken publicly yet, about his views. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ross Gregory.
My name is Holly Cunningham. I live at 537 Calley Avenue in Elk Acres. My husband and I just bought the house in October. At the time, there was no Windsong. Knew it was inevitable. All of Middleton City is growing, so you know it's gonna happen. I was fine with the majority of it, not okay with the potential for a hotel or mini storage unit coming from, we came from Lebanon, and really, the only good way to get from Lebanon to Gallatin is 109. So you want a hotel or storage units to be the first thing you see when you pull into the city? I don't. That's not how I want Gallatin viewed. That's not where I want my future children to grow up. As far as the connectivity, I ditto what she said. I have thought about the playground. It's same old, same old. You don't pay for it, you don't really care about it. So are all of these kids gonna come over and destruct what we have, and our dues have to pay for it over and over and over? They're not going to add any benefit to our neighborhood except 400-plus cars on our roads. And I went to the planning commission meeting, where 14 people spoke, 13 against the connectivity, and we were all disregarded, except for Mr. Hennel. I thought the way he was treated was extremely disrespectful. And I just don't feel like we were heard at all. If you think that people are gonna wait at a backed-up stoplight to get out to 109 and not cut through a subdivision that has no traffic, you're kidding yourselves. I've done it personally. We all have. So to add 400 potential cars to a one-in-one-out subdivision, I think is gonna be detrimental to our subdivision, and it's gonna bring our safety and our kids' safety down. Thank you.
I'm sorry, would you tell me your last name again?
Cunningham.
Cunningham. Thank you, Ms. Cunningham.
I don't know if this is allowed, but I was given a statement from another neighbor. Can I read her statement as well as my statement as well?
Start with your name and address, please.
My name is Jessica Stanfield. I live at 494 Ryan Avenue.
Would you like to start with your comments?
I'll start with my comment, yes.
And then we'll see if we are on time.
That's fine. My name is Jessica Stanfield. I'm a resident of 494 Ryan Avenue in Gallatin. I come before you today regarding the Windsong proposal on 109 and South Water. None of us who have come before you today are naive. This expansive 126-acre farm will be developed at one point or another. My concern as a resident of Gallatin and someone who lives near the area the development will be is about this correctly, about going about this correctly and minimizing the impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. As I've spoke every meeting, my number-one concern is connectivity. I think that's everyone that keeps coming to you guys, is number-one concern is connectivity. The road layout of Elk Acres is not conducive to allow the influx of traffic. Sure, you're sitting there thinking, "Why would people use Elk Acres roadways when they have a traffic light?" They will use Elk Acres because less people will be on our main arteries planning to exit, since the retail will draw much-needed traffic. Residential will not have a desirable situation on their hands. Instead, they would rather exit a less-clogged artery, Ryan Avenue or Savannah Avenue. After all, this was Mr. McCord's plan all along. Let's keep the traffic off the main artery. However, guess where Ryan Avenue and Savannah go? They go to 109. So whether they exit from Windsong or they exit from Elk Acres, they're gonna get to 109 either way. So why do we need to be connected? This master plan isn't alleviating any traffic from 109 at all. All we're doing in this master plan is causing speeding, extra wear and tear on Elk Acres roadways, and safety concerns for the streets many children feel safe to play in. Mr. McCord argued that the grid connectivity plan is wonderful. His image is the first one that pops up if you go to a Google search and put in neighborhood connectivity. Wonderful research. Unfortunately, that image looks nothing like the connective plan this development has to offer. Sure, the true grid structure that Hellwood Estates, Jacob Heights, and several other neighborhoods in Gallatin offer works. Look at the Windsong proposal. Do you see the lovely grid structure? No. You don't see a grid layout at all. Due to the multitude of wetlands and retention ponds, Windsong cannot uphold that grid layout. With this being the case, can we truly say that maximizing connectivity to provide access to this layout for schools, leisure, and consumer needs is the best way possible? I'm a teacher at Guild Elementary. This layout and connectivity would not encourage me at all to go through Windsong to get to Guild. It would actually take me more time, extra miles, more gas to travel through Windsong over to Hellwood Estates and onto Guild. Why does this possibly make sense? I see nothing enticing me, from a financial standpoint or even a common sense standpoint, to travel that path. Elk Acres is not exclusive to having the only one entrance and exit. Foxfire, Lennox Place, Fairway Farms are just an example of a few neighborhoods that have that uniqueness and the same characteristics. I just, I really ask that you listen to the residents. Many of us have come, meeting after meeting, begging you to stop the connectivity. If you want to develop there, fine, but there's no reason to connect it to our neighborhoods. That is my statement. I did not...
You have a minute forty-two?
Let me, sorry. She sent it to me on my phone, so I would have to pull it back up. Her name is Cynthia Schaefer. She also lives at Ryan Avenue. I can tell you her address is 495 Ryan Avenue. She would like to voice her concerns over the Windsong project. Her home, which she's extremely proud of, is the greatest asset, and now, having no way to earn income herself, its retention and value is extremely important to her. If this development proceeds as planned, it is my fear that it will greatly affect the 200 homes of Elk Acres. And while I personally did not experience any structural defects from the blasting during the construction of Clear Lake Meadows or Patterson Farms, many of my fellow neighbors did. While I am not opposed to the addition of retail businesses, I believe they are good for our economy and all of Gallatin residents. I am greatly opposed to the connection of Elk Acres streets, as I previously lived on a cut-through street in Nashville prior to moving to Elk Acres and witnessed firsthand the increase in traffic flow, which leads to my... the increase in traffic flow, which leads to my primary concern for the safety and well-being of the children who freely enjoy playing on our community sidewalks. It is my fear that the primary, and primary concern, that if this development, as planned, and the streets connected, motorists who do not live in Elk Acres will be cutting through our community and will not be cautious or mindful of the children, the community, and therefore endangering their lives. Also, if this development proceeds as planned, criminals who burglarize homes in Elk Acres will have additional fast escape routes. Lastly, our streets are already difficult and narrow to navigate without the increased traffic. Thank you for your time.
That was perfect timing. I'm impressed. Thank you, Ms. Stanfill.
Sorry.
My time already up?
No. I'm just having clock issues. Go right ahead.
Uh, my name is Cliff Spears. I live at eleven zero eight Savannah Avenue. I have premiums as everyone else. Thank our showed pictures. I unfortunately don't have them today of Savannah Avenue. The neighborhood has it, and it basically just narrows the street in a couple areas down to one lane. If traffic were to creep the street, I think it's gonna create a problem. Not to mention, like everyone else said, we've got children playing on the streets. I see children all the time I'm coming home, you have to be mindful of. That's very, you know, my kids are grown. I don't really have to worry about that, but I don't wanna see someone else's children get ran over. And I kinda feel like, after hearing from the past meetings, that, you know, I, I've been married for over thirty years. I listen to every word my wife says. I don't always hear every word she says. And, and I usually pay dearly for it, not hearing what she says sometimes. And I'm just afraid that's what's gonna happen if you guys are not listening to us or hearing us. But just like everyone said, we know this development is gonna go on regardless. Not really fighting that. I just don't think we need to be joined to it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spears.
Okay. I'm John Miller. I'm at one oh four Pond Drive. I'm gonna read from the strategic plan, Gallatin Strategic Plan Goal Number Three. Preserve history and small-town charm. Unplanned growth can exacerbate unwanted growing pains in the form of traffic congestion and decreased affordability. Well, so far, Gallatin has already got approved. Three thousand nine hundred and ninety-two single-family homes, seventeen hundred and six, and forty apartments. And that's enough for seventeen thousand eight hundred and thirty-one people, with the density that we have per house currently. We've got other developments that are gonna be coming up, and they add another six thousand nine hundred and, uh, six thousand one hundred and ninety-seven people, and twelve hundred and thirty-nine of those will be children. So we're gonna have an additional twenty-three thousand six hundred and forty-eight people, four thousand eight hundred children, and fifteen to twenty thousand cars a day on the roads. And that, that's pretty concerning. All right? And especially in the strategic plan, when we say that we lose seven football fields, the crop land of the year, nine football field, uh, ten football fields, a tree canopy, and let me remind everyone, science tells us that one mature tree produces the oxygen needs and removes the carbon dioxide of four people. So when you, I don't know how many trees in the football field, but year after year after year, that's a lot of trees. And we gain nine football fields of pavement every year. Now, in addition, you'd have to add to that all the other communities around. I'm gonna read you one statement that, this was made by Darrell Woodcock. He wrote it, and he's on the Hendersonville Planning Board. And he wrote this after his April, after the April second meeting of this year, about the Montclair development that wasn't approved. What the commission did not like. The development did not fit with the surrounding area along Jones Lane. This is Hendersonville's last chance to create something unique and available to those of us that would pay a premium to have a larger lot in the country setting. This does not exist anywhere in Hendersonville, so people like me have to move out in the country or to Gallatin. And yet, we're trying to look like Hendersonville. I'm gonna pass two pieces of paper around. If you guys could just pass them around, I didn't make copies for everybody, 'cause you guys, you just, they're gonna get thrown away anyhow. But the first one is thirty-one E. At five-ten yesterday afternoon, from East Main Street, looking towards town, traffic went all the way back. And you checked with the police, there were no traffic stops, there were no accidents. That's just normal traffic at five o'clock in the afternoon. And that one is just, is that the idea of the strategic plan when they talk about rural And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
My name is Susan Osmansky. I live at ten seventy Savannah Avenue in Elk Acres. And I guess I'm just kind of pie in the sky, but I am totally against the Win Song development. And I'm actually against the overdevelopment of the city. I don't know if I have enough time to go through all my notes that I had made and hopefully had hoped to talk about, but I'll give it a shot. At the last planning meeting that we had, there was a gentleman that also lived on Savannah Avenue. He was at ten thirty-nine Savannah Avenue. He couldn't make it here today. But he gave examples of the Meadows, and he read a statement talking about the Meadows development and the Win Song development, and the comparisons, uh, negative comparisons between the two. The Meadows was voted down, and Win Song was pushed through. I can't understand why two developments with equal negative comments, one gets passed and one doesn't. I'd like to know why Mr. Purrier's company was not mentioned, and why he was allowed to be the chairman for that Planning Commission involving Elk Acres, when he lost the contract for the landscaping of Elk Acres. He should, it's my opinion, he should have recused himself from any involvement with Elk Acres, knowing that he had a conflict of interest. I don't know if anybody would allow me to make a comments on anything like that. I brought that up at the last meeting here, and I was told to see somebody at the end of the session, but I couldn't stay to the end to ask that question. Any comments?
This public comment for the public, so it's not a Q and A, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe nobody else knew that, or not too many other people knew that. But Mr. Purrier had a, from my opinion, conflict of interest, and should have recused himself from any discussion on development that would involve Elk Acres. At the, also at the April ninth council meeting, one of the council members, and I don't know which one it was here, was a gentleman, made a statement to the effect that, even though the residents don't want it, we have to consider what is best for Gallatin, don't want the Win Song development. We are the residents, we are Gallatin. We are the residents of Gallatin. We pay the taxes. We voted you in, we can vote you out. It's not, what is the best for Gallatin? It's what's the best for the residents, 'cause we are Gallatin. Also, at the April ninth council meeting, one of the developers, or one of representatives of the developers, mentioned the attractiveness of Gallatin. The councilmen, you council folks and the planning commission are destroying the attractiveness of Gallatin that drew many of us to make it our home with this needless overdevelopment. And I just can't understand that. One of the, at the April ninth council meeting, again, one of the representatives in the development side made a statement that if the city doesn't grow, it dies. He then proceeded to give statistics about Nashville, and how home sales are down six percent, and closings are projected to be down twenty-two percent. One of the, I think it was the chairman of the council here, but I don't really know you folks at this point, asked if Nashville was dying, and developers, representative just laughed and said no, and then kinda covered his tracks. This is a perfect example of talking out of both sides of one's mouth. But does this prove his allegation that a city has to keep growing, or it dies? This overdevelopment here, it is just ridiculous, from my point, my perspective and my point of view. It proves that a vibrant city can still take a breather from needless overdevelopment, and see how everything shakes out before you just destroy it permanently. And I'd like to also bring up the idea, when your property taxes are gonna, and utility costs are gonna start doubling or tripling, to pay for the required additional infrastructure for all this overdevelopment. We will be paying all this increased cost, not to developers. They'll just get rich and walk away to the next place that they just, they're going to develop needlessly. And I'd like to know also if any of you council folks or your extended families are benefiting from unnecessary, all this unnecessary overdevelopment. Anybody have interest in building or building equipment companies, or landscaping supplies or maintenance, landscaping maintenance businesses?
Again, public comment for the public, I'm sorry.
Public can maybe think about that. I've only been here a couple of years, and my time's up, but I just wanna throw that stuff out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Lanis. I live at two twenty-seven Hill Avenue with my wife, Lisa Lanis, who's out in the audience tonight. And really, I'm coming here tonight to, hopefully, to get everybody to understand that this is a tremendous, tremendous opportunity for the city of Gallatin. I think everybody can benefit from a place like Publix and some of the out parcels. But you guys have a unique position to be, in a position to be savvy negotiators. And I believe there's some things that really could be put on the table to negotiate with. And one of those would be the development of the hotel, four stories. I don't see that as being congruent with the neighborhood anywhere around, and in conjunction with that, the four-story storage facility, don't see that as happening in place. As far as negotiating, you know, we started out with the planning commission, there was gonna be apartments. I appreciate Councilman Fennell saying that he would encourage folks not to be for that, and so thankfully, that got taken off the table. However, it seems like when that was taken off the table, the number of townhomes doubled. And so I think a savvy negotiating position and to increase land space in between the townhomes and the cottages would be a great, a great idea. Maybe cut it in half. I'm concerned with the water runoff, 'cause I live right beside the pasture, and I've seen the damage firsthand that the water can do to a person's basement, the streets. My driveway gets flooded each and every time we have any significant rainfall. And we do live directly at the bottom of that back half of the property where the townhomes are gonna be built. I also convey the thoughts of my friends here, I consider, and, and community members tonight, when they're talking about the impact of the roads being extended from Hell Estates and from Elk Avenue, or Elk Development. And I appreciate Mr. Fennell, once again, for standing up. The only one that really did, and without, with the exception of probably the officer here also, and we're concerned about the traffic, the noise, crime, just the constant influx that's gonna cause between Maple into Publix and going out. Other things that I'm concerned about here tonight is as far as, you know, once again, that, that density. If that could be cut down drastically, that would be great. On-street parking was mentioned last time. I don't know where that would be a good idea. I see that as a safety factor for kids walking the neighborhoods that are supposedly gonna be walkable. So I think that should be taken off. I'm concerned about the traffic, the traffic from one oh nine that I see every day going to Portland, and the traffic going to Gallatin. Also concerned about the, the need probably for Birm to be considered, to separate maybe Elk and definitely Hell Estates from all the development that's evidently gonna happen. And maybe increase the size of the landscaping they're just talking about putting in there. The traffic light on South Waters, it's gonna be maybe, I don't know, less than a thousand feet from the light at Airport Road and one oh nine. I see that as being a backup to what we once knew as a bypass. I think that's gonna be a tremendous issue. It's something to consider. I don't know if, if one or the other traffic light could be maybe done away with, but I think keeping those roadways from the existing developments, as you've heard tonight, would probably, if we could do one thing, that would probably be far and above the one thing that we could do. And be good negotiators, and let the people that are gonna develop, develop, but let them know that we're, we're as a city, and we stand strong, and we wanna see this city be nice, and be something we can all be proud of. And lastly, but not leastly, many other cities around us, especially Williamson County, has tremendous impact fees, where when developers come in, they've gotta pay a price, a price above and beyond the regular taxes to help for schools, for infrastructure, utilities. And so that's something that I'd like to see our city definitely put on the agenda and get into a law situation where we don't constantly have to be taxed to death when these developments continue to come. So thank you for listening to me. I appreciate you being good negotiators, and help our city be beautiful and grow and be vibrant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lanis.
Hi, my name is Jenda Clemmons, and I live at two three-nine Leah Court. Amanda Ross Gregory is my neighbor. The main issues that I wanna bring up, all of my neighbors and people who live in the surrounding areas have basically said everything that's on my mind, but I really wanted to reiterate my concern with the sinkholes around the area and the possible property damage. My backyard meets the property, and I've enjoyed, the two years that we've lived there, the huge families of deer that go through. I'm very sad that we won't have those great views, but you know, we figured it was inevitable that farm was gonna end up being developed at some point. The problem is, my home, it touches, my property touches what has been called a retention pond, but we have since found out that it was actually an active sinkhole that was supposedly developed to prevent it from sinking any further, which is terrifying, because I'm sure that's something I'm gonna have to tell people when I try and sell my home. And I was misled about that when we purchased the property. And our neighbor, two houses down from us, has had two sinkholes, active sinkholes, open up in the back of their property, which, you know, typical rain, we live in a very sinkhole-prone area, especially in Tennessee, that's fine. I've also had neighbors who had damage to their property with the other developments, and I cannot remember their names, when blasting was happening close to our neighborhood. So I'm deeply concerned with, if something like blasting were to happen, what would happen? Not just to the general structure of my home, because as my neighbors have mentioned, people had cracks in their foundations, I think some ceiling issues happened. But I'm concerned about what kind of sinkhole issues that could open up around my property. I have a two-year-old daughter, and the thought of damage to my property that could actually hurt us within our home is something that I lie awake at night fearing. And so knowing that this possible development could influence that and put my family and my life in danger is very, very scary. And the second part of this that I'm concerned about is, I'm a former educator, current stay-at-home mom, plan to work with Sumner County Schools in the future, whenever my daughter goes to school. And even if each home that was being built in this development only had one child, that is an incredibly large number of students, not counting all the other development in the area, that are being brought into the schools. And I've seen firsthand how increasing student-to-teacher ratios work against positive, good, equitable education for all students, and make a teacher's life infinitely more difficult. So I don't know. I'm sure the school system will do all that it can to accommodate these students, but I feel like- students, but I feel like there needs to be a lot of input from the educators in the area and they need to be worked with when we're having all of these developments within the city of Gallatin. Because ultimately, for the sake of making a buck, we're possibly putting the education of our kids at risk. And that just would be super disappointing because I've heard great things about Sumner County Schools. I want to work for Sumner County Schools. I really don't want to see them kind of go down the drain. I believe that might be the main things I'm going to say. Yep, that was basically it. I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clemmons.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilperson, I think we need to say. Pascal Javance, Long Island Park. I was not going to talk about Windsong because I haven't followed that. I was going to talk about agenda number one, but when I'm listening to all the people...
Your address, I should know it by now, something Long Island.
The what?
Your address, I'm sorry.
1335 Long Island Park. When I hear all the people come on, come here, I just remember something you said when we were talking about the light issue, where you say that, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Mayor, but I think you say when one person complains, that basically the voice of a hundred persons would don't say anything. I think you said something kind of like that. So if I look at the last planning commission, it was 14 people talking. Tonight, there was 10 peoples, 24. If I base on the last census of the population of Gallatin, that represents probably around 5% of the population of Gallatin. So I think maybe you guys should listen to what they say and, and try to be more attentive of the council. Now back to the green space, Madam Mayor. We want to spend a lot of money to buy green space. I'm kind of a practical person, so I try to figure out where we spend the money and all that stuff. So what I don't understand is that you guys authorize all this development with a minimum open space. I'm getting old and it's tough to sleep, so I found the, the city ordinance really interesting. So I tried to read it and didn't find in a city ordinance, no way talking about green space. We talk about open space. So I think why, why you guys change the ordinance and make a point like wonderful lady was saying, to, to try to make something different here and force the developers to include real green space in their development where kids can come and play, stay there. Instead of just talking about open space, we include retention pond. Yeah, that's, that's really helpful for the kid to go play, retention pond. And development where basically every neighbor is going to be able to open his window and shake the hand of his next neighbor. I don't know, we could call that the Gallatin Green New Deal. That's catchy, catchy name. I think people made a lot of, paid a lot of money to fund that name, so that would be kind of nice. But that's just something to think about. Like that would not have, as a city, taxpayer money to spend million dollars to go buy some green space, that would be already there. Just an idea.
Thank you, Mr. Javance. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening under public recognition on, on agenda-related items? With a reminder, there will be a time at the end of the meeting where you can speak on non-agenda items. Okay, seeing no one, I declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. Moving us now to Mayor's comments. I do have several things this evening. The first of which, and Rachel, I don't know if you need to address this as well, but the first of which is a report on our debt obligation. We signed the bond yesterday on the gas, signed the papers yesterday on the gas bond. It is required that we report to this council what the debt service on that is. We don't have to vote on it. We don't have to discuss it, you just have to be made aware of it. Anything different I should say, Rachel? Ms. Nichols says I've covered it adequately. Any questions? All right, you have that, you may take it home and read it or pass it on to Mr. Javance and that can help him sleep at night. It's actually short. The next item is just the release that was sent out yesterday and I hope the public's interested in this as well. This was a release from the Gallatin Economic Development Agency and it was about Archer, Archer Data Centers moving to the city of Gallatin. This is a project that's been in the work for quite some time and we're very excited about this because this represents exactly the kind of investment we have been attempting to attract to Gallatin. It's a high capital investment, low jobs, but very high wage jobs. And we hope that that is going to continue to be the trend. This is, Archer Data Centers will go into the industrial park, it's going to be across from Reddick, next to Axum. And in addition to their initial investment, we expect future tenants could invest up to $100 million. So we're very thankful, we appreciate our partners in that, certainly TBA, the State of Tennessee. And anyone else I should mention, James?
Yes, our electric department.
Oh, yes, certainly Gallatin Public Utilities and Gallatin Electric Department, always great partners in that. And so we appreciate that. Did you want to say something, Mr. Fennell? Oh, okay, very good. Glad to know that. On the ball with something. And I wanted to remind the council too, that I think this Friday, Chief Williams, it's Friday, isn't that the last day to order bricks for the, what I'm calling the bell garden? I don't know if it has a proper name, but...
Next Friday.
Next Friday. It's your last day to order bricks and so Chief Williams will take your checks. Just a couple of calendar reminders, this Friday is Good Friday, most city offices will be closed, traffic pickup, uh, traffic, not traffic, garbage pickup will not occur on that day. There is another car cruise in in the City Hall parking lot this Saturday. And next Friday, the Good Morning Gallatin, formerly the Government Relations Meeting, will happen again at Sumner Regional Medical Center. There's only two more this year, so again, I'd encourage people to attend that if they would like. It's at 7:30. And let me make sure, one of them's not happening at Sumner Regional, but this one is at Sumner Regional. And so I think that's going to, there's my five minutes, concludes my mayor's comments. And we will move now into the regular agenda. So the first item on the regular agenda...
You want to move item number four up to the top? Six.
Okay. Councilman Alexander has an issue in that he may need to leave early and that's item number six. It should be a very short item, so with no objection, we will move item six up to item number one. And then Councilman Hayes has requested that we move up item number four to item number, is two okay with you, Councilman Hayes?
No, I just thought we should. I mean, that's what everybody's here for.
Okay. Is that okay with everyone?
Sit around.
All right. So let's proceed now with item number six and recognize Councilman Alexander for first reading on ordinance 01904-24.
Thank you, Mayor. This is appropriate expense and revenue money for the Gallatin Haddon Track grant and I so move.
Okay, motion by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilman Fennell. Is there any discussion of this? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 01904-24. With all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. We will move now to item number four, which is first reading on ordinance 01904-22. And for that, Vice Mayor Camp is ready to rise.
Thank you, Mayor. This is orders of the city of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee. Rezoning 126.36 plus or minus acres, consisting of 17.16 plus or minus acres from the residential R15 medium density to PGC planned commercial, 14.02 plus or minus acres from the R20 low-density residential district to the PGC planned general commercial district, 76.45 plus or minus acres from the R15 medium-density residential district to the MRO multiple residential office district, and 18.73 plus or minus acres from the R20 low-density residential district to the MRO multiple residential office district with a preliminary master development plan for Windsong located on the north side of Highway 109 and the west of South Water Avenue, authorizing the revisions to be indicated on official zoning analysis refilling conflicting ordinances provided for servability and provided for effective date. So moved.
No second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Camp, second by Councilman Hayes, opening the floor for discussion. Who would like to be, Councilwoman Love?
I'd like to ask the, if they're representing, well, I'd like to ask him if you can reassure the residents that are concerned about the drainage problems, sinkholes, on what you all are going to do to take care of that problem.
Sure, sure. And that's Randy Caldwell with Reagan Smith here, representing the applicant. And I've been doing this for 35 years and the questions are always traffic and drainage, you know, at the, at the end of the day. So we have a long history of being able to address that. And usually drainage is my simplest answer because we know that the city, you know, will, you know, require detention. We're not allowed to put any more water on them than what is allowed to go on now. But we, this was identified as a problem early on in the process with the staff when we first met with them. So they made us aware of some efforts that they wanted us to go through to be even more diligent about the drainage on this property. And we're committed to that. One of the efforts that we will have to do is more of a regional drainage approach to this, to help identify some of the issues that they are, you know, seeing within their own development that is beyond our development. So we are committed to that. We did discuss about oversizing our detention ponds over and above what is required by the city. So where the city requires you to account for the 10-year storm, we are designing our structures to fit to for the 100-year storm. And we have done enough preliminary engineering on this because obviously there is some earthwork that's going to, you know, occur on this property. My client has to have a good feel for that, that he can make this work from, you know, from earthwork standpoint, make sure that we can accommodate those and, and we can, we believe we can. We've done enough looking at this to do that. On top of that, the other thing that we talked about with, with staff as, as part of this process, again, there are some drainage issues that are occurring downstream from us that are not a result of us, but a result of some things that have happened in the past. And I do believe, we stated this at the planning commission, but my client is willing to contribute up to $100,000 towards off-site drainage improvements as part of, as part of his program, if the city would match that with some of their stormwater fees. So we're, we're willing to go to that level as well. So, you know, the assurance I can give you is, you know, we're engineers, you know, the last thing we want to do is be sued, you know, for something that's going on downstream for causing a problem like that. So we take that very seriously when we're looking at a plan and, and we've looked at it very seriously in this due diligence phase of a project. So it's not something that we ignored. We've tried to address this head-on as part of our process. Does that answer your question?
It does. As far as the drainage, what about the sinkholes?
Yes, sinkholes, again, you know, we have geotech done, you know, as, as part of what we do. So, you know, the best case is to avoid those. You can do injection permits. Sinkholes are common throughout middle Tennessee, just something we have to deal with. There's mediation that can occur if you run into those. If we can leave them, you know, we'll leave them in place. But that's just part of the topography, you know, part of the geologic formation down here. So it's something we're accustomed to, to dealing with as, as well.
So no geotech, I'm sorry, I didn't write your name. So no geotechnical work has been done?
We have had some geotechnical work.
Some, but not thoroughly.
Yeah, we've had that, you know, they'll do further geotechnical work as we get into construction plans. That's the normal procedure. We get some preliminary geotech work done out there. There's been a couple sinkholes identified, but again, our goal is to usually stay away from those if, if we can. You can still develop on them with some mediation, but I think the sinkholes that they're referring to, which is up against Elk Acres, if you look at the master plan, that is, you know, a lot of open space that is down there, so we can, we can work around those. You know, if we put water in there, we have to get a permit from the state to do that, so they monitor that as well as part of our process.
And if they alter the plan in any way, Mr. McCord, they'd come back to planning?
The, the plans that are before you are preliminary master development plans, so the engineering plans will be a lot more detailed. It may not be necessary to come back with a preliminary master development plan unless the planning commission considers it a significant change.
Thank you. Any other questions for the representative while he's here? Miss Love, were you finished? I'm sorry.
I have something else, but you can go. I was going to ask if you have any, any plan to have a playground put in in there? I didn't see it on...
Oh, not at this time. I mean, the amenity for this development is the streams, the wetlands. We have a pretty, talking about walkability of the community that was brought up. We have some trails that we have integrated throughout the development and some sidewalks. Well, I can certainly, I don't have an answer for you that today. That's something we can go back and I can ask the developer of the residential component if they consider putting a playground. We certainly have area that we can do that on there if that, if that is the will.
I think that might help some of the concerns of the Elk Acres people with them, with those concerns about kids coming over and damaging theirs. I'm still a little, I'm still not thrilled with that 10-foot difference between homes.
I understand, I understand. And I did, you know, go back and look at your zoning ordinance and these are 6,000 square foot lots is, is what the single-family lots are. And the zoning classification is an RM6 or R6, one of those two, which does allow for five-foot steps. So that's where we got that setback from, to be inconsistent with what's in your zoning ordinance relative to that size lot there. So we, again, we felt we were being consistent with, with that, so.
I, I understand that this is a great piece of property to be developed and I think most people realize that it's going to be. And a grocery store over there would be really nice to have. You've done a lot of work to, to help by taking out the apartments and looking into a playground, et cetera. So my other thing, my other problem is that connectivity, which, you know, is not something that you need to deal with, but...
It's not, you know, getting up and doin' this for a long...
That's a city issue to debate. Much deserved.
Sure, you're welcome, you're welcome.
Councilman Fennell, did you have something for the representative?
Not the representative, I think it would be more towards you or our city attorney.
Anyone else have anything for the representative while he's standing there?
I do.
Councilman Pan?
Looking into and committing to a playground are different. I think they would commit to a playground.
Prior to second reading?
Yep, we're good. We can. Easy answer.
All right, now?
For you, but just suppose, I, and it's these people, Reagan Smith and the engineers and stuff, I'm really concerned. On county level, when I was a county commissioner, we built a school one time and once schools built, it flooded a row of houses. We was able to hold their feet to the fire because naturally we had to pay them and they went back and corrected the problem. If just any chance they was to develop this, and I think that you'll help the water situation, I honestly do, but just say if the water situation got worse when he built this and it was coming off his property, do we, the city, have any kind of recourse towards this developer to make him go back and fix it?
Hold on.
Yes, they, I mean, we would definitely have recourse if, if they didn't follow the, the plans correctly. Absolutely.
Are you asking, following the plans and having the solution are different?
Yeah.
You know, if the plans are, the plans don't provide...
That's something you all have to do on the front end.
Okay.
And that's where we lean on our engineers with their engineers.
Pardon?
I said, that's where we lean on our engineers to work with their engineers. Because I certainly couldn't tell you.
Nor can I.
Councilman Everton?
Mayor, I've got several emails and phone calls this last week about the infrastructure and, and the fees and, and the impact of schools and everything. If I could ask Tim to come up for just a minute.
Who?
Tim's with our codes department. Tim, if you could answer us for just a minute, and I know you can't give a definite, you know, on the amount of, of fees, but can you just enlighten us on, on what kind of fees would be involved over here and about the amount of fees that would be involved in development like this that would help offset the impact to the city?
What, what we look at is, we took the 465 units that they were talking about, half single-family, half townhouses. And from a standard fee that we've seen through the last couple of years, you're talking anywhere from $2,000 to $2,500 a home will be charged for building electrical, those types of permits. You're looking at a million, million and a quarter income to our department, just on permit fees.
Mr. Whiteley?
That doesn't have anything to do with the commercial, commercial beef.
You, you may not know this, I was just wondering if you happen to know the number on that, how the adequate facilities tax was calculated?
That I don't, I'd have to guess at that.
I think it's like 72 cents per square foot.
I think it's like seventy-two cents per square foot. That's my understanding.
I think it's like seventy-two cents per square foot that the county gets it, and all that money has to go to the school system.
Well, I meant with...
That was my point. I was just going to ask, I was just going to ask that question, not only to the city, but the county gets that kind of impact fee that, you know, they have to build schools and build other things.
Not called an impact fee, because that was only approved for Williamson County.
That's correct, that's correct. But there is a lot... it's the same thing. There's a lot of money that these developers have to pay to, for development like this that goes to pay for schools, to pay for roads, to pay for all this stuff. And it's not... they just don't come in here and build one. I mean, there's a lot of fees. And I mean, we're talking several million dollars worth of fees that they'll have to pay to us in the county to be able to build a subdivision. So, for folks to send us an email that says we don't have an impact fee, there's nothing that impacts that, you know, but there is, there's a lot. So, all I would ask is please just, everybody do your homework and understand the overall picture of this and the impacts that they have to pay to do business in the city of Galton.
Jimmy, I'd like to point out that yesterday I met with Anthony Holt, and that was a question that I brought up. It's forty cents per square foot industrial, seventy cents per square foot residential. And that money does go directly to the building fund for Sumner County Schools. And to point out that I think it's Franklin just changed their rate to straight ten thousand dollars that goes to the school per permit.
Mr. Caldwell, I have a question. You may not even know this. I'm asking all kinds of questions, although I appreciate Mr. Fennell and Mr. Overton with the answer on that one. Do you have a timeline that you project the build-out on this to be?
I believe we projected five years out. If I'm not mistaken, I think the residential would be maybe more like six, probably three phases with the residential, which would take the longest. There, those are usually two years, you know, per phase on that. You know, they, again, just to reiterate what we said at the last meeting, the grocery center would be coming out first phase as part of this development. The wild card's usually out parcels. Sometimes those go real quick, sometimes they don't. You just never know with that, but I think you...
So, you would project grocery within two years?
Yes, I think that would be pretty accurate.
I think that's probably a question that many people would have.
And that would be, again, first phase. That would be part of the first phase of development.
Council?
Well, speaking of the grocery store, do you have a commitment from a certain store? We've heard rumors, but...
We're not at liberty to say who that is quite yet, quite yet.
Questions, anyone? No further discussion. We're ready for a...
I have a question, but it's not really, doesn't apply to you. And I would say it has to do with the connectivity of the roads, because that's... we heard from several people that say how wonderful it is and how we really need it to be that way because of emergency vehicles. Can we consider connecting those Duncan Street, for example, and putting up an emergency gate that would stay closed until it was needed for an emergency chief or whoever?
I'd say that'd be something for...
A lot of crash gates.
Engineering and planning and the fire department to address. Fire department from the safety aspect, but then I'd like to hear from engineering and planning on the other issue.
The fire department wouldn't have an issue with that. And Coles has just said they'd probably be okay with it as well, but we would probably have to do some research and determine what type of barricades that could go there to reduce the traffic, but only be used for emergency access.
Thank you. Because just from my own experience on Duncan, driving through there, I know that people are going to cut through and just speed through there to get to South... to 109. I feel really afraid. So, is that something that has to be voted on, included in this motion tonight, or is that...
There is a second reading.
Public hearing, second reading.
Public... there's public hearing would be in two weeks, and then in two weeks after that would be second reading.
So, I'd like...
You can amend it to second reading.
I'd like to hear more about that. And I'd also like to amend it to include the playground. But is that something we do tonight or next?
Um, they still have a master development plan to be approved. Mr. McCord, is it something that planning, based on this discussion, would hold them to in the master development phase?
No. I would make that amendment to the preliminary master development plan, and we can work out where appropriate location would be. So, they could just...
Okay.
You could just say add a playground for, I don't know how large of a playground you have in mind, or what type of children you want it to accommodate. But you probably, at this stage, don't want to mandate it to go in a certain location on the plan right now. Just provide some flexibility and get it at FMDP stage.
Yes, Ms. Love, an amendment would be proper.
Tonight?
Whenever. Doesn't matter.
Well, I think so. I'd like to amend it, but I guess we have to vote on this.
No, you amend it first.
Then I move that we accept this plan with the addition of a playground to be added.
Okay, so the amendment is for the addition of a playground with the second by Vice Mayor Camp. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Will they show us a rendering of that from the second reading right there?
I don't know. Would you, Mr. Caldwell? Prior to second reading?
We can come up with some images for that. Yes, sir.
A big one, you might have to take a couple of townhouses out.
Anyone else with discussion on the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? Amendment does pass unanimously, so we're back on the motion as amended now. Is there any further discussion on the original motion now as amended? Seeing none, we're going to vote on first reading on ordinance number 01904-22. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. We now move to item number one, which is second reading on ordinance 01903-19, and Councilman Overton is recognized.
Thank you, Minnesota. So, I'm authorized to negotiate the purchase of three different properties. Now, so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Fennell, opening the floor for discussion.
Yeah, this is one that I talked about, and I'd like to see us if we could vote on each one of these individually.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
All right.
Yeah.
Motion by Councilman Hayes to vote on the three properties individually. And then I think that would set forth an amendment to the ordinance, and we would amend the ordinance before we move forward. So, a motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Fennell to vote on these individually. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. So, let's proceed with discussion of the properties. Is there one that you'd like to speak about first?
Let's do Langley Hall first.
They'll talk about Langley Hall first.
Langley Hall, yeah. I got a question on that.
Uh huh.
Have we seen the appraisals on each of these properties?
Yes, and they were all sent to you. Well, they were all included in your packets at some point. We've not reprinted them all because they're extensive.
Okay. Did we not rezone that property?
We did rezone that property.
And the appraisal was done after we rezoned it?
It was.
Okay. Would that not make it more expensive than if we would have left it like it was?
Well, I'm sure it did, yeah. I'm sure it did.
All right.
Because I think it was agriculturally... well, no, there were... I don't recall what the zoning on it was. Mr. McCord, do you... Yeah.
I mean, it's okay. You don't have to...
I mean, part of it was industrial, part of it was residential. So, you know, the industrial, in theory, could have been more expensive, and the residential...
Have we come up with a plan and cost about what we're going to do with the building or anything like that?
No, we have not. That would be a long-term issue to address.
So, if we go and we spend this money on this property now, we're just going to let that building just sit and just...
Well, I'm...
Take care of it and...
I would be hopeful that we would...
Cut the grass and do all that stuff.
Yeah. And the maintenance, as projected by Mr. Brown, was not nearly as...
And wanted to hire somebody else and...
No, he said we didn't. And his maintenance, remember his maintenance estimates that came to y'all, they were not significantly substantial. The building could be a significant cost, but I think that building is also a very significant opportunity. As I described to you all, I would love to see us have the opportunity to create a training center similar to Andrews Leadership Institute at Camp Wijjiwagen, where we had a training facility in that building, which is, could be all one large room with great audiovisual, a small kitchenette and restrooms that would be available to our civic groups, certainly to our city departments for their training and efforts and issues, and also to our corporations, because that is one thing in this community that we seriously lack, is a good facility in which the public can have meetings and trainings. And so, that is my dream for that property, because I can see...
And also, there might be some opportunities down the road to possibly grant money.
And I would think that we could find some grants for which we would be eligible for that kind of pursuit. Beyond that, you know, I'm very passionate about this property because the historical significance of Langley Hall. And there are some structures on the property that have been looked at by... oh, I can't tell you the fellow's name. But he's kind of an expert in these old things. And he says that the foundations of these old structures, that to David Brown now, looked like they were about to fall down. He said that the integrity of the structures is actually good, and that the foundations are original foundations, and they had the horse here in the foundations, and that they could have very significant... they could have great significance historically. And I, again, this is my dream, but I'm open to whatever anyone else might dream or have a brilliant idea for. But I could see that whole park being a great educational venue, where you could have interpretational exhibits, where children could learn about agriculture, or the history of Langley Hall, or the history of Galton, whatever it may be. But I just... and it has that old, that old rock wall and...
Clarify one thing for me, Paige.
Okay.
I know there's a lot of ideas out there what could become of this. Let's just suppose that years down the road, things change, and we want out. And I think there is an avenue. Can you explain to me what we would be allowed to do with this property in the future if we chose to do something with it?
Well, until we decide to purchase this property, the owner is not going to spend the money to have a conservation easement created. At the time the conservation easement is created, we would certainly be a party to that. I mean, that's part of our negotiation. But I do not think that the landowner would sell it to us for the dollar figure she's willing to sell it to if we were not agreeable to not developing it industrially or with the high-density residential use. I do think she would be open to selling it to us if in that easement, we allowed for a few homes or recre... Susan, you were in the meeting. You may have some other memories.
I mean, she was... the owner was fairly open to whatever we wanted, but we could have some homes, recreational facilities, interpretive centers, all kinds of varying things. We would be the author of that on the front end. We'd be very involved.
So, we'd always have a way out.
We would have a way out, but, you know, certainly I'm open to direction from this council. We could probably ask her to agree to something where, you know, if we could sell it in three-acre parcels for individual homes, that's just out of the blue sky. She may say, oh, no, only five acres. I don't know what she might be open to, but she seems fairly open, because she does understand that position for us as well. Yes.
I just think we're just getting into something that we just do not have any idea what the cost is going to be down the road. I mean, and I just think it's a mistake for us. That's the last thing I will say about that.
I appreciate it, but I feel strongly that the cost of preserving land that is below market value, that will only continue to escalate in value, is well worth it. Mr. Fan? Mr., I think Councilman Alexander was ahead of you.
I just have two questions.
Okay.
Question number one, do we have any idea approximately about how much the land in that area was selling for or sold for?
Um, it's in the appraisal. There's some comps that were included in that land. And it appraised for one point eight million dollars. So, that would probably base comps in that area at about thirty-five thousand acre. I can go through the appraisal right now.
I was just wondering. I was under the impression that some of that land in that area sold for like fifteen thousand per acre.
I'm sure it has at some point. And I'm sure it has, depending on the zoning and for less than that. So, I don't know when the land that you're speaking of may have sold, but...
It's been a couple of years.
But the comps would have to support the appraisal of this property. And I do know that she was marketing it at that thirty-five thousand dollar an acre rate.
Okay. Have we, as far as the city point, have we tried to negotiate this twenty-five thousand per acre?
Mm-hmm. We certainly have.
And she didn't...
That's her number, because for her, and, I mean, you know, she can sell it for thirty-five thousand an acre and make a lot of money, or a lot more money. It's still a lot of money. Or can she sell it? She can sell it to us for twenty-five thousand an acre and use the difference between the fair, the market appraisal and what we're paying as the conservation easement through which tax credits can be realized.
Okay. Is there any cropped land on this? I mean, is there any crops being...
Um, I don't know if there currently is or not.
That's one of my questions.
Hey, maybe.
I'm sorry, Steve.
It's on industrial, please.
Okay. Mr. Fan?
I'd like to ask Mr. Brown, and his figures to upkeep this land, did that include mowing the whole hundred, hundred and twenty-six acres?
But not, not... it's only the main part you're going to mow more frequently. The back part now that's not mowed.
And I understand it's no longer zoned agricultural, right?
Correct.
Would that keep us from leasing this to a farmer to put soybeans or corn until we get a plan for this?
Mr. McCord? Mr. Brown?
If it's not up there, most of it's out front, I don't think it'd be up to lease.
I believe that most of the property now is used for cattle grazing. It's not zoned agriculture, and it wasn't zoned agriculture either. So, it's a non-conforming use, but it's pre-existing, can continue to exist. I don't think that we've had any... we wouldn't want agriculture to go into a vacant parcel of land in a subdivision, though.
Mr. McCord's addressing your question.
So, it'd be a continuation of another agricultural activity that's currently current on the property.
Other than currently going...
Yeah, as I understand, there's cattle that are grazing on the property.
Not on that front part, but I guess if it's all in parcel.
Is that part of it or all of it? Because there's no fence around there.
At least southerly and easterly portion at least. I'm not sure about around the house, but...
Not around the house.
Does anybody know how many acres are available to put in crop land?
No, don't know that. I suppose you could cut all the trees down and, you know...
Yeah, I really don't want to cut all the trees down. That's part of the charm.
And as far as the access, is it... how many access? Just only one, or is there...
Two.
I think there's two driveways into the, maybe even three on, including the far eastern portion of the property. Maybe three. But they're not improved. They're just one-lane drives.
Steve, I grew up out there my whole life. There's never been any crops in front of the house.
What do you mean by front of the house?
On the side of...
I started, so, sud service market.
No, that's not...
You used to go all that side.
That's industrial. That's not part of this. It just comes up, it just comes up to where the fence starts there. It comes over.
About where that wall is.
It's just fifty-something acres. The rest of that's industrial, and that's not part of it, Steve.
But the cows are grazing on how much, I wonder. If there's cows out there now, then they got to have fence around the cows.
Probably two-thirds of it.
The cows are on the other side where they're going to, where they're going to build the houses that was across from the folks that's been coming up here. The cows are across from those folks.
That long strip, you know, front of Coles Ferry.
It's all around Coles Ferry Road.
No, I prefer not to.
Are we, with that conservatory, are we able to lease or even sell the house if we think that that's too much, if somebody wanted to buy it or lease it to use as a venue?
Again, we could negotiate that within there. And there is some provision in a conservation easement where you can exclude the structure for whatever purpose. It's very much, as Ms. Haumacalli said, kind of up to the authors. So, it's just to protect the intent of the seller long-term.
Motion to approve the Langley Hall.
Okay, motion to approve Langley Hall by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any further discussion?
I'll have to abstain.
Okay.
I'm a partner on another venture with the property owner.
All right. Okay, so all those in favor of approving the purchase of Langley Hall, please say aye. Think I have three. Opposed, please say no.
No.
I have two noes. Councilman Alexander, how are you voting?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, so it, I have two abstentions, three in favor, two opposed. Okay, so it, I have two abstentions, three in favor, two opposed, it is approved. We will move now to which one would you like to move to?
East Main.
East Main is next. East Main is a small parcel of land, it's right there at the beginning of the historic district, it does have a beautiful rock wall, it is, and I wasn't here tonight, he spoke, I'd love to have heard what he said, but Mr. Schultz, I think, spoke about it, part of the Battle of Gallatin site, again, it has historic significance, and for me, again, speaking of my dreams, as downtown, the density continues to grow in the periphery of our square, I think it would be just lovely to have a small park that's accessible by people who go to the hospital, people who live in the area, people who visit or work in downtown. Because as, as, you know, Gallatin grows up, there are going to be more people walking the streets and looking for a green refuge in our core commercial district.
Motion to approve East Main property.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any, Councilman Fennell?
Now, how much was this piece of property? I'm sorry.
351.
351?
351,000. That's one?
I'm sorry, but I have totally gone blank on what that price was, because originally he was asking, it came, the appraisal came in at 450?
I think it was 351,000.
459, I think it came in at 459, and he said he would take 440, I think, I have that dollar figure.
Is that piece, that piece of property landlocked?
No, you have access directly from East Main.
You got access to it?
From East Main, yeah.
From East Main, you get a driveway to it or something?
Uh-huh, yeah. Right there, right there at where the rock walls happen.
And your plan, Paige, is to have a green park sitting there, maybe a pavilion?
Pavilion, potentially a playground.
Just where people in that end of town can have something to walk to and go to?
And we don't have nothing over there really right now, am I right? No, I mean, of course, that's where the football stadium is, there is a small piece of triangle property right there, behind there, and I would like to talk to the county to see if they would, you know, let us include that in this park space, because then we could extend it a bit more, so...
What's the total acres in there?
3.4 acres.
2.81, I think. I don't know where I kept it from.
Maybe I do have an appraisal. The appraisal's 359, the asking prices, well, the original asking price was 400. The appraisal came in at 359, and Mr. Hodges said he would take 340.
It'll be 2.81, that's correct.
I'll have to go through this, that's what Mr. Camp says, I bet he's entirely right. The value is the value. And that's why we had an appraisal. And I have these documents with me, if anyone wants to look at them.
What are we looking for, the appraisal?
Now I'm looking for the acreage per...
I think it's about right. No, yeah, okay, just call for the question.
Okay, call for the question, you want to vote on, call for the question, all...
Let me, can I say one thing? Like this piece of property right here, are we gonna try to move on it pretty rapidly as far as some type of development on this particular piece of property to go ahead and start using it?
Actually, with this particularly, particular piece of property, because it was a battleground site, I definitely feel like it's one to pursue grants on.
It's one for what?
One to pursue grants on, because there are some, you know, battlefield organizations that will support the preservation of those.
This is in the, this is in the historic district, so it just makes sense to me to have something green kept there on a battleground site in one of the most, one of the older, most beautiful parts of Gallatin.
Call for the question.
Vote on, call for the question, all in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Okay, we're going to vote on the property located at East Main. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no.
No.
I have two noes, Mr. Camp and Mr. Hayes, is that correct? Any abstentions?
Which one, I'm sorry, no.
That was East Main. So what was your vote, Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, so I had five in favor, two opposed. Thank you, that one passes as well, and now we move to the Sugar Tree Lane property. Questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Overton.
I'll second it, I think we need that property to tie in with a piece that we already own.
Okay, I have a motion and a second opening at full discussion. We would have access when the property becomes accessible that is designated to be future parkland, when Jennings Lane, is it Jennings Lane? I always get confused on that. No.
Nor do we have it to the other 40-something acres, John, we got 40-something acres that was given to us, and we don't have access to that either. Well, we do, but not access that we need to be using, so...
You know, this is not land, as you know, that we pursued, it was an opportunity that was brought to us, and I think one of the most interesting, well, besides the fact that it joins land that we already have, this is owned by what was a church that is now defunct, and therefore funds have to be dispersed in a certain kind of way, and the owners have committed to spending, not spending, but giving that money from the sale of this land to area nonprofits, so, local nonprofits.
It's adjacent to some we already own, is that right?
Yes.
So how much, we already own 40, and this is how many?
14?
14.
We own 46.
We own 46, and so this would make that total property 60 acres. And David's working on, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown is working on getting a master development plan for that land, so that we do have a plan in place, that when we do get access, we'll be able to have a park there. And this is not a park that we're envisioning being for ball fields or anything like that, it's more an area that we envision being one with trails and picnic shelters, and maybe some small recreational activities.
So you would be using the whole 14 plus the 40, and doing something pretty soon, hopefully, or within the next three or four years?
I don't know that'll happen that quickly, I'm not gonna commit to that, I don't think you, yeah.
If I'm saying it like, Ms. Love, this used to be one tract of land, and this was a piece of land that Dan Downs gave to the city, and then part of it was tracked off and so for future development of the church, and the church went different ways. My only thing was is, is to tie that land back together. I know Councilman Hayes really wants to do something in our neck of the woods, so, and I'm interested in that, and I thought maybe it would help out by having much more land right there to actually do something with.
All right, we'll vote on...
Before you vote, I just, we may have to separate these out, different ordinances, because we have different vote counts, so I just want to make everyone aware of that, that basically you've amended this ordinance by separating it out, make sure everyone is okay with that.
Okay.
So we're gonna have separate vote counts. I'm gonna look at it, but we may, we may have to do that.
Can we do it both ways?
What do you mean?
Just vote on the ordinance as amended by previous votes, but then if it's not passable that way, have...
Depending on how this vote goes.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Okay, so now, we're going to vote on the Station Camp property, if you all are ready. Seeing no one objecting, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Have a no from Councilman Hayes? A no, no from you? Okay, no from Councilman Camp? Councilman Alexander?
I'm not.
I said that, okay, so five in favor, two opposed, no abstentions, is that correct? Okay, that is approved. So, Ms. Haumacalli, that puts us where?
Since they were all approved, we can now proceed with one ordinance.
Okay, we now have one ordinance each, and so it will be a stand, as stands, because all three of those properties are included, allowing for up to 2.2 million dollars as a purchase price. Any further discussion on the ordinance as a whole?
You know, the, I feel comfortable with the Station Camp development, I feel comfortable with the lot in town, the Langley's the only thing I really could, that I really thought about a lot, but I feel comfortable now that we do have a way out. There's a lot of opportunities, whether it's to lease the land to cattle, lease the house out or do something, but way down the road, if we see that we bid off more than we could choose, or more than we could chew, or I feel that we can move on, but I'll, and sell it or something, but I want to make sure with Ms. Hayes that we do leave ourselves plenty of opportunity where if we want to back out, that we can do something.
I think Ms. Haumacalli and I both have a good idea of what this council wants, and we will certainly advise you of the conservation easement before we finalize it.
I echo that too, John.
I know it's, it's a little scary, but there again, too, I have, I have fooled with a lot of property in my life, and I don't know how you can go wrong with property.
Yeah, and again, I'll commit that this council will be apprised of that easement terms before it is signed. Yes, sir.
Expanding on what Sean is saying, so you're saying if we buy this piece of property and we put the conservative easement on it, if we want to sell the property, the easement comes off?
No, no, no.
That's what I was saying, so what do we do up front?
Right.
Is what we're stuck with.
Right.
But if we want to decide we want to get rid of this property, we, part of it we can't get rid of because it's gonna have the easement on it.
No, we'll always be able to sell it, it's just...
Yeah, but you're not gonna find a buyer.
Let me ask you this, are we doing...
Or, you know, it may be three-acre tracts, it might, what, you know, we don't know yet what that...
Can we, can we as city council look at the final contract on this?
That's what I've said, I will make sure that you see that before it is signed.
I was wanting to make sure the mic was on and it was on right.
I want you to, I want y'all all to be comfortable with that, certainly.
This is not, well, it's kind of related, but has anybody got a plan for which property will be developed first?
I would say as opportunities, as, I would say as opportunities become available, either via funding or uses.
So that there will be grants applied for, for all properties?
I don't, I can't promise that. Certainly LPRF grants come around every couple of years, we would be eligible for those, but that's going to be a priority, a priority list that we'll work with Mr. Brown on, because we may have some other park project that we would prefer to apply via that. I think there are probably some corporate grants, I think certainly the battlefield grants that I spoke of would make sense for one. So I think where we would begin is searching for dollars to help in the development of those properties, and when we, when all comes together with a plan and available dollars, then we would move forward. And some may not be for a long time, I'm not, you know, we've had, Mr. Hayes, how long have we had the 46 acres on Station Camp?
Twelve years, we've had it twelve years.
Twelve years.
Twelve, yeah, twelve, fifteen years, yeah.
But, I mean, I appreciate this so much, I was thinking about what Mr. Javant said earlier, and about including open space, green space, is that an interchangeable term, Mr. McCord? You don't have to get that, well...
You talking about revision?
No, 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 I'm asking you if open space and green space are interchangeable terms.
Well, they can be, I suppose. Green space is just, open space on a plat...
Does that have to be like grass turf?
Open space on a plat means it's not reserved for development purposes. Green space could be somebody's backyard, front yard, but it's not open to the public or the homeowners collectively.
Okay.
So, we identify open space tracks in, as common area-owned tracks in most subdivisions.
And those are required in all of our residential developments at this point, however, to be able to preserve large areas of green space, the city cannot condemn land to keep it from being developed, it's owned by a third party. They either have to own the land, or some generous benefactor has to donate it to us, and we would welcome those as well. All right, ready to move on and vote on the ordinance? This is second reading on the ordinance 01903-19. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, yeah, that sounds weird to even vote on it, Ms. Haumacalli, if I'm doing it.
I think, I think you've already voted.
Okay, so it's considered, since we've already passed each individually, we're done. I apologize. Let's move on to the second reading on ordinance number 01904-20, Vice Mayor Camp.
Thank you, Mayor, this is orders appropriating $12,266.67 from revenue received from insurance on a damaged vehicle, so moved.
Motion by Vice Mayor Camp, second by Councilwoman Love, is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is second reading on ordinance 01904-20, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. We still had five in favor, since two have walked out, so it does pass. Item number three is first reading on ordinance 01904-21, Councilman Hayes is recognized.
This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, reaffirming the mixed-use district zoning on three lots totaling 131.35 acres. Group B parcel 013.00, 014.00, and 015.00, and approving a preliminary master development plan for 378, 382, and 386, Big Station Camp Boulevard, located south of the intersection of Big Station Camp Boulevard and Long Hollow Pike. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fennell, is there any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 01904-21, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item number five is first reading on ordinance 01904-23, Councilman Hayes.
This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning 4.372 acre portion of a parcel from the PGC Plan General Commercial District to the MRO Multiple Residential and Office District, and a .143 acre portion of a parcel from the residential eight planned residential development district to the MRO Multiple Residential and Office District, with a preliminary master development plan for Kensington Row, located north of Freedom Church Road and west of Green Lee Boulevard. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilwoman Fennell, is there any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 01904-23, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Motion passes, ordinance passes unanimously on first reading. Item number, I believe we're going to seven, is Resolution R1904-22, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, this is a resolution appointing Larry Wise to the Gallatin Industrial Development Board. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Hayes, is there any discussion? This is Resolution R1904-22, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number eight is Resolution R1904-23, Councilman Fan is recognized.
Resolution appointing Larry Wise to the Gallatin Health, Educational, and Housing Facility Board, I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilwoman Love, is there any discussion? Okay, this is Resolution R1904-23, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. That brings us now to other business, does this council have any?
You got a resolution on our desk?
Yep.
I'm not asking for that.
Yep. Ms. Haumacalli, do you want to explain, or do I need to ask Buck to explain, or...
Go ahead. I can, I'll explain it. So last week, when Nick came up and discussed with you the airport authority needing permission to build across a right-of-way, and we discussed that need to come before this body, at that time, I thought that we were going to be able to vacate the right-of-way, but we are not able to do that just yet. So you have an ordinance before you, just authorizing and giving permission for the airport authority to build across right-of-way. I've not been able to run this through the airport authority's attorney yet, I don't know if they're gonna want an easement to do that. Typically, if you're building on someone's property, the right-of-way, you're gonna want an easement, so we may have to execute an easement as well, but this is just an ordinance giving the authority... giving authority and authorizing them to build.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fennell, is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously, is there any other, other business from this council to come forward this evening? Okay, seeing none, we move to public recognition on non-agenda-related items, this is the time of the meeting, you may come forward and discuss items that aren't on the agenda but are of concern to you. Again, we ask that you introduce yourself and give us your address, please.
Mayor, why don't you was coming, can I ask Nick or somebody one question? What's South Water and Steam Plant, how's that coming on the railroad tracks? Just quickly.
Mr. Rogers, oh, exactly, answer.
Um, the, the railroad crossing, the panels are in, we're just working to coordinate with CSX on when the work will actually take place. Honestly, no, it's kinda, it's. I mean, in the summer is probably the best case. We're, we're, they're getting rough, we understand, but we're working with CSX to try to get it taken care of.
My name is De Board, and I live at one double oh seven Hart Street here in Gallatin, Tennessee. I rise today to inform some folks about something, and that is that Mr. Lighthizer and his group at the Battleground group would love to hear from us on, with regard to our historical piece of property, Mayor, and there is a organizing group that they have bought properties and so forth with battlegrounds throughout the nation. All of them, Shiloh, all of them. So that would be our place to go with regard to that issue.
I would ask that you send me his name, if you would, please.
Ma'am?
I would ask that you send me his name, if you would, please.
I, I'll come by your office if I can get a talk to you. We'll, we'll take care of that problem for you quick. I have come tonight to make a presentation, if the fellow we call Let's Make a Deal, Mr. Fenton would step forward, please. See? Thank you. Seek and you shall find, my friend. I saw the deal you're slipping around today and dropping off those big rolls of stuff. What you have to do, Mayor, is you have to make sure you have grease on the wheel so it doesn't squeak. That's what we have to do on this deal, so we wanna thank you and the staff for doing an excellent job, and that's why we torment Mr. Fenton with this stuff today, because we gotta make it sweet for our folks coming in to do business with us. Y'all have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. De Board. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening under public recognition on knowledge and related items, I see Mr. Javant.
You were talking about the pavilion, I remember that.
About what?
About pavilion put in the land, I remember he has one, he's ready to give to the city, so that will save some money.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, he told you he would give it to you to save his, his stormwater fees.
That's right, will you move it for us?
Yeah, I remember things, I'm getting old, but I still remember some things. Yeah, I had a couple of things to know, kinda, kinda bother me. I have to come back to Winsong, because I was the main, the main attraction tonight, when the developers say is ready.
Okay, that was an agenda item, so if you wanna address Winsong, you have to come back when Winsong is on the agenda next time. This is for non-agenda items.
Non-agenda, okay, Liberty Creek. Libe- Liberty Creek, okay, it's kinda related, water, water issue. I don't know if you guys need to go check that, but they, they redigged again for the third or fourth time, the retention pond. So now this stuff is a most rosity, because what they're doing didn't work, so I don't know if it's something you gotta check.
Mr. Rogers will pass that on to our stormwater engineer.
Yeah, yeah, because it's, as soon as it trend, there is more water on the road than, you know, retention pond. It was kinda, you know, look, look pretty normal, because the piece of land is going down probably at five to eight degrees, I suppose. And I missed the last one where you guys were talking about the airport, so if you need help on that, I can, I can help you on that.
You really ought to engage with the Airport Authority out there, especially if you're interested in serving.
Yeah, I need, I need to watch the tab, because I don't really know what.
I don't think there's anything that we discuss that would be of interest to you.
Yeah, what got said on that, but.
But you, you really need to meet the Airport Authority folks.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should go to the meetings.
Because you guys talk about the private jet entity, and that was my word for almost twenty years, so I think we're not ready for that, and if somebody think the wealthy who use private jets, I used to fly on my career, gonna land in Gallatin the way it is, that's not gonna happen. I'm sorry to.
Mr. Fenton could actually show you some, share with you some information about the users of our airport, you might be surprised.
I have, I have numbers too. And we, maybe the numbers we have are not, are not.
Well, that's why it'd be interesting for you guys to sit down and discuss, I have no clue.
Yeah, but I think there is a lot of work to be done there if you want people to come to that place.
Well, the Southern Regional Airport is that, it is not in our control at all, we have tried to work with them to help accommodate their desires to expand and grow, and that's been the City of Gallatin's role.
Yeah.
But we, I, I mean, I, I, I think they would really appreciate your experience, interest, and expertise.
You have my number.
Yeah, we'll make introductions. Mr. Fenton, remind me, and I'll send it to you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening under public recognition on non-agenda-related items? Seeing no one, that makes us ready for another motion. Motion to adjourn by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Fan, all in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, we adjourn, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for hanging out with us through this very long meeting, and we look forward to seeing you again, have a great evening.